All right. Good evening, RTM, Groton residents. This is the Town of Groton RTM regular meeting for April, April 9th, 2025 to be exact. I'm going to turn it over to roll call with the town clerk.
Adams?
You had an extra.
Bailey?
Here.
Porella?
I'm ready to give someone. Representative Porella, you here?
Porella.
Representative? Casper?
Yo.
Dean Shinbra? DeGraffin Wright?
Here.
Dudden? Fitzgerald?
She's here because she's talking to me.
Fitz Ritchie?
Here.
Fox? Frickman? Gardner A.
Here.
Gardner M.
Here.
Gibbs?
Here.
Good?
Here.
Hume?
Here.
Johansson? Kayden?
Here.
Linder? Luck? Massett? Matter?
Here.
McGalroy?
Here.
Nifel? Norman?
Here.
Norris?
Here.
Aubrey? Porella?
Here.
Powers K.
Here.
Powers S.
Here.
Pulaski?
Here. Dudden is here, but she's not able to answer somehow. I'm not sure what's going on. She sent me a text.
Okay, let me see if she... Hold on. There's... There she is.
Fitzgerald is here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Fitzgerald is here. So that's going to be... Twenty-two.
There's Dudden.
Let me see, and there's Dudden. Twenty-three.
We're at, um, Omritz. We're at Omritz.
Omritz, okay. Omritz. V.C. Williams? Watson?
I'm here.
Wells?
Here.
Whitney? Swindell?
Here.
And moderator?
I'm here.
Twenty-seven.
We have twenty-seven members present. I declare a quorum. We can move on to item B, moment of silence and salute to the flag. If you can all please stand. I'd like to welcome back Representative Swindell to the RTM. And if you could please lead us in the pledge of allegiance. You want to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, Representative Swindell, please? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Item C, approval of the minutes of the March 12th, 2025 meeting. If there are any additions, provisions, omissions, inclusions to those meeting minutes, please let me know. Representative Frickman and Dean Shinbra. Dean Shinbra, I saw your hand up first. Do you have a question?
No, I just want to say, I wasn't available at first, but I'm here now.
Okay, Frickman's here, so we got twenty-eight total. Count time. All right. And Dean Shinbra, did you have any thing? No, okay. All right, so if there's any other omissions, revisions, inclusions, omissions, Representative Porella?
Just a point of information. I did try to get into the meeting. I was the one that we couldn't connect.
Okay.
So I know it probably doesn't count as a presence because it's non-voting, but just so that you know, I was here.
As long as you are here in spirit, we'll just believe that you're here. Okay? All right, thank you. All right, so those minutes were approved. Okay? This is public petitions, item D. This is the portion of the RTM agenda where RTM welcomes comments from the public. Each presentation should be limited no more than five minutes or less, as directed by the moderator, and if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be limited to matters pertinent to the Town of Groton. The moderator or members through the moderator shall ask questions only in order to clarify the speaker's presentation. Responses may be given by the moderator and/or by the town manager. Individuals should state their name and address for the record. And if you wish to speak virtually, please register by emailing council@groton-CT.gov no later by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Is there anyone online? And looks like the slate is empty. I see one member of the public. Did you wish to speak tonight? Okay, very well. We're going to close public petitions. Recede of communications. Just to be clear, we had a resignation, Representative Herbert from District 3. So she has resigned, and then we have gained a wise sage. And again, I'm very happy to see Representative Swindell jump into the fold with us here as the RTM member for District 3. So thank you for coming back to us. I mean, you and I have been working together for well over a decade plus. And again, your contribution to this community is very well appreciated. Representative Aubrey's here, so we have twenty-nine members present.
And we have Whitney.
We also have Representative Massett, so that's thirty. And we also have Representative Whitney, so we're at thirty-one total right now. So I just wanted to make that clear for the record. All right, just to be, to let everybody know, we're going to move on to, unless there's any other communications by the body. If you did not get it, Town Manager Bert has let us know that he is not going to be here this evening, but he did give us his updated report. If you have any questions or comments for him, please direct those questions upon that financial report to him. Representative Aubrey, did you have a question? I have, you see your hand up.
I'm sorry, you couldn't hear me when you were doing the attending.
Okay, thank you. Understood. All right, economic... Yes, Representative Powers S.
Representative Umres is here, he just can't speak.
Okay, Umres is here, but he can't speak. Is he on Zoom?
That's what he said.
He's here.
Oh, he's there. All right, great. All right, so we're getting a clear count here at thirty-two. All right, well done. All right, got to do that five times a day. All right. Economic development, there's no report, no committee, so there we go. Item H, I did not receive any communications from the Board of Ed or the superintendent of schools that they would or would not be here, so we're just going to keep moving on. There are no committee reports, to my knowledge, right now. However, we do have a referral that just came from last Tuesday's town, well, excuse me, two town councils ago's meeting, where we're going to be dealing with items, and I've directed those to the finance committee. One has to do with parking, parking fee changes to the ordinance, and then there was another one as well. So I'm just going to give that to you all. So hopefully, on our May meeting, you'll be able to take care of that. Thank you so much. All right, community development, no report. Education, no report. Finance, no report. Public safety, no report. Public works, no report. Recreation, no report. Rules and committee procedures, no report. Liaisons report, do we have any liaisons report tonight? All right. Okay, moving along. All right, so next on the line is budget discussions. Again, this is one of those items that we've spoke of numerous times, trying to discuss this. I would, before I allow the floor to discuss this, I just want to be clear that I highly encourage you to watch the town council's budget discussions. One of those budget discussions, the first budget discussion for the town council, had the town council, by majority vote, move the town operations budget that was submitted by the town manager in its totality. Okay? So that means that the town operations budget for all the items that we deal with, outside agencies, as well as the subdivisions, was approved in one number. Okay? So I would have you go back to that meeting, take a look at it, and see the rationale behind it. I am going to inject a little bit of opinion, which typically doesn't, isn't what the moderator does. I would like to highly recommend that this body, moving forward, when we start our budget deliberations on May 1st, follow that same lead. And let me be clear to specify why. The town manager that we have has been highly responsive to the needs of this community. Two of those big needs are maintaining those services that we love to have in our community for all residents, as well as the taxpaying residents of this community also. The budget in total for those town operations was three percent. Now, there are some ebbs and flows, as we understand. However, the majority of those increases have to do with collective bargaining and employees with their union contracts. Those are things that we really don't have any ability, in my opinion, to increase or reduce because of the contracts that they have available. I would highly encourage this body on May 1st to follow that lead as the town council has done. For that reason, so that we can focus on the two items that are the bigger ticket items and the ones that we can make increases or reductions from, which is the Board of Ed, as well as the capital improvement projects, which is the CIP. This is, again, I just want to make this very clear to the public. This is not us saying, as an RTM body, that we are rubber stamping what they're doing. I believe that, in my opinion, that we are doing our best to make it as efficient as possible for us to go through our budget process and focus on the items that we really have a power to change. And I will leave it at that. If anybody is in need of the links for YouTube to look at the deliberation, whether it's the public hearing that they had or the first budget meeting that they had for the town council, please let me know, and I'll send it to you directly. And that's all I really have to say on that matter. All right? So I will open it up for discussion on budget. Representative Porella?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to disclose to the RTM and the council and the people that are watching that I am employed now by the Board of Education as a substitute teacher, and I just wanted to disclose that before the budget starts. And I will not be voting on the education budget this year. However, one comment to that, and that is that I have been in the trenches in the school systems, and I can honestly, honestly tell you they need every ounce of money they can get, that they have. And one other thing, and then I'll keep my mouth shut, is that I feel this year especially, with the uncertainty and the destruction of the Education Department nationally, that the state is now going to have to make up the difference, and the towns. So in your deliberations on that budget, just to keep that in mind, it's not going to be an easy budget this year, as we all know. And if you want the services, that would have to be something that you have to decide on. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Porella. I just want to add another comment to that. We, as an RTM body, are still going to be going through our committee assignments. They are going to discuss these committee assignments for the budget. We've worked hard with the town clerk's office to try to schedule those. Please make sure that you are going to those meetings, if you are a part of that committee. If you are not a part of that committee and you have a question on a specific item that isn't in your committee, please send those questions to the committee chair, a member of that committee, myself, the town clerk, or the town manager, to get those questions answered. So I just want to make it abundantly clear that we are still doing our job. We are still doing the due diligence, and we're having those conversations for all of those line items that are coming on to those specific committee assignments. Is there any other discussion on the budget?
I have a question.
Yes, Representative Aubrey.
Well, I have a statement. I would like to share the fact that I feel that it's a disgrace what's been done with the budget. I have all the admiration that anybody can have for a town clerk, I mean, town manager, excuse me. But our job is to review the budget. Our job is to talk to the people that run the departments. We don't know if they thought there was something else they really needed. We know nothing about it. And in order for us to do our job, we need to be doing it as we have done it in the past. I cannot agree with you. I am ashamed of our council. And we need to do our job. We're the last place that a budget goes to. We're going to say, oh, it's fine, when we don't even know what was discussed. Nothing, we know nothing. And I adamantly ask that we go through the process that's proper. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Aubrey. I just want to also make a point of clarification that...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Can you speak up a little bit?
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right, I just want to make this abundantly clear as a clarification point. This isn't without precedent. This has happened in the past. The town council has approved... Again, excuse me, I have the floor, Representative Aubrey? Representative Aubrey, I have the floor. Thank you.
Excuse me, I apologize.
Thank you. There were members of this body that were a member of that town council at the time where they approved this in one line item vote. Granted, the circumstances were different, so on and so forth, but we've, again, had this happen in the past, and this is only for specific town operations. And we are still, again, I'm recommending that we specifically focus on the big line items, which is the Board of Ed and the CIP budgets as well. Thank you. Representative Dean Shinbra?
Is that my answer that we might even go to discuss doing it the correct way?
Representative Aubrey, we still have, based on 6.5.3, we have committee meetings, we can have those discussions. We have already discussed that if you have a question about a specific budget item, a specific account, that you please forward those, that information. There is, we still have to go through the process on May 1st on whether or not this is going to happen or not. But I know, at least me personally, as well as another member here, has tried to make that motion, and again, democratically, it was, it had failed. All I am saying right now is I am hoping, as the moderator, that we can be as efficient as possible and have that potential vote happen on May 1st.
Can I ask you another question?
Well, I did turn over the floor to Representative Dean Shinbra, but I can look at you afterwards. Thank you. Representative Dean Shinbra?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I wanted to make a point of asking that during this budget process, when we have a gallery behind the RTM, that they be silent. They have their time to speak at the beginning of the budget session, but after that... Last year, that out of hand, as far as I was concerned, there was catcalling, whining and hollering. There was bullying while representatives spoke. I had a representative who was afraid to vote their mind on the budget because they were scared retaliation was so out of hand. And I would ask moderator to instruct the gallery to have quiet decorum in the public facility and in the public meeting, but their time to speak and make their voices heard at the beginning of the budget process, not while it's going on. We're not a basketball game. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Representative Dean Shinbra. Note taken. I will make sure that when we have our beginning discussions on May 1st, that there is decorum within the gallery. Everybody has a right to speak. And again, we will use some non-verbal body language cues like we would at a school in order to acknowledge whatever it is that they're doing. Thank you. Is there any other discussion before I move on to second hands? Representative Norris?
Just to clarify, so RTM will not get a presentation based on each department's budget?
You received the, did you receive the budget book?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so that's basically it right there, number one. And number two is if you want to hear the discussion in speaking to that specific budget, I highly recommend that you listen to the committee meetings for each specific committee. All of those have been scheduled. If you need to schedule, I believe we've all been sent that. But if you need it to be resent, please send it. If you had any questions regarding those budget items, then I would highly recommend you either ask them specifically to the committee chairs, send it to the town clerk, send it to myself, the moderator, or send it to the town manager to get those questions answered, and watch the meetings. Other than that, like I said, I'm only proposing an idea and an option for May 1st.
However, RTM will get an opportunity to debate each department's budget?
If, well, there is a, again, based on the process, yes. However, what I am advocating for at this point, someone may make a motion, they may end up deciding that they want to do town operations specifically in one whole number. We have spoke to committee chairs already, and they would be happy to share those meeting minutes prior to the meeting on May 1st so that they could speak to whatever it is that you want. Again, there is no rubber stamp here, there is no absolute. We're here, and on May 1st, we'll be here.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome. Representative Aubrey?
I would like to make a motion that the RTM will review each department individually. I hope somebody will second.
I have a question.
Okay, you have a question, or is it a second?
Well, clarification. During our, real quick, during our Robert's Rules instructional meeting, she doesn't need a second. Now, we have been traditionally doing a second, which I will second for her, for this motion. However, I think that's another issue that needs to be taken up also, whether we're going to be doing seconds to motions, because during the budget process, we're going to have a lot of disagreement possibly, so... But I will second for that portion of the end of the clarification.
All right, so there was a motion made by Aubrey, seconded by Porella, to instruct the RTM to go line by line on this budget. Go ahead and speak to your motion, Representative Aubrey.
It was our responsibility to review the different departments. We may very well agree with everything that's there, but our job as RTM members is to do that, especially so the public can be aware. I know many people don't show up for meetings, but that's because, I think, the majority of people get their information through Zoom now. But I feel our duty as RTM members, as the last word on money for the Town of Groton and what will end up being the tax burden to the Town of Groton, it's our responsibility, our duty.
Point of order.
Representative Frickman, point of order.
I just had a question. Is today the really appropriate time to be making a motion when we're not even in the budget yet in regards to this issue?
Well, we are, we are on item budget discussion, so again, I feel like it's in order. If you do not, or the body does not feel that is in order, they can always appeal the ruling of the chair. Representative Massett?
I would just like to say, I understand the process of going through each line item. If the desire is to cut taxes or cut the mill rate with a three percent increase in the budget, I doubt if there is any of that in that budget that can be cut. And I think John did a good job. We need to take that into consideration. If we can't cut it significantly for folks, then we may just have to let it stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Frickman?
Good question.
One second. On this specific motion, Representative Norris hasn't spoken yet, so I want to give him the floor for that.
I'm not disagreeing or agreeing with what Representative Massett just said, but I will ask, is three percent the benchmark? So if it's a five percent, we would go line by line and look at the budget? So the rationale of doing our job is it what it is. However, I will agree, if this body truly feels that the town manager and council has appropriately done their job, and we can follow in their footsteps, we should do that.
Thank you. I just want to give a, before I recognize Representative Casper, who hasn't spoken yet on this motion, I just want to give you a little bit of background. Two years ago, prior to me being moderator here, I tried and attempted to do the same effort, to try to do one line, one vote. It did not pass democratically. However, we spent six meetings and spent sixteen-plus hours going through line by line and changed zero for that. Now, again, again, it is our duty, it is our job, but again, we are also have been elected to do this job by our constituents in all of our districts. But I just wanted to make that abundantly clear, that sixteen hours, six meetings, zero changes in dollar amounts on all items. So I just wanted to make that clear. All right, Representative Frickman?
Actually, you just spoke my words, Mr. Moderator. I was going to say, two years ago, we did the exact same thing, and it ended up being the exact same. So I one-hundred percent support what you're talking about. And I think if we've all done our work, and we read the minutes, and we read the book, and we saw what the council did, I think I'm fully prepared to support following as all is one number.
Thank you, Representative Frickman. I'm sorry, I apologize. Representative Casper, you had your hand up as well, so you have the floor. And then I'll go back to Representative Aubrey.
I'm sorry, was that, you're going back to me?
No, not yet. I have Representative Casper, then you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would, I would like to see a more granular approach. As an example, last year, the Community Development and Services Committee, we reviewed all our line items under our purview, and we voted all of them as a package. And I would hate to see that the committee would spend the time with the representatives at a meeting and then come in here, and we have our recommendation, and it's just completely overlooked. I mean, over, just totally overlooked, as if we didn't meet, and we'd be voting on the Groton Public Library, you know, the pilot, and going at each one individually. It just seems a waste of effort. We're doing our due diligence in the committee, and you can read, go by our report, and I really can't see going line by line, especially in that group. Whatever you cut is going to make a very minimal effect on the total budget.
Thank you, Representative Casper. And again, I just wanted to be clear that we... Thank you, Representative Casper. And again, I just wanted to be clear that we've had a discussion, and I would hope that all committee chairs would submit their minutes in a timely fashion so that we are able to share them with everyone to understand what it is that you've discussed at your committee meeting, as well as watching the RTM committee meeting budget proceedings, so that they are fully aware of what's going on. And if we need to at that specific May 1st meeting, that they could go over and discuss all of those minutes if need be. Representative, yes, Wells? Sorry, I got new glasses here. Representative Wells, followed by Norman, followed by Barrell.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not crazy about going over things line by line, and they always ask the department heads, if we cut your budget by $25,000, what would you do? And the expectation is, well, we'd have to lay off the chef. However, I think there, on the other hand, I think the general public needs to hear more about what's in the budget, and this is an opportunity for those out there listening in to follow what's going on. And that's others, I'm of two minds on this. One, I don't want the analysts, how much if we cut your budget 50,000 bucks? But on the other hand, anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I cannot stress enough to the Groton community as a whole. We have a great, great technology service right now with Groton Municipal Television. Shaun and Rebecca do a great job here. They keep every single committee meeting, and every single budget meeting, and every single town council meeting online so that we can all watch them. I highly recommend you go back and look at the public hearing for the town council, and watch their first budget deliberations of the town council to get all that information that you need. Representative Norman, followed by Barrell.
I just want to make sure, because I know we potentially are about to vote on something, I want to clarify all the things. Okay, so right now, on May 1st, there may or may not be a motion that moves forward to vote on everything as one budget item?
Town operations specifically.
Town operations.
Yes.
And in anticipation of that, currently, we're not inviting anyone to that meeting in case that happens, is that?
No, we still have the items on the, on that agenda.
The people will still be invited to speak to. We won't put out further invitations if we choose to vote on it as in bulk, so that we don't waste people's time.
Correct.
We will have the committee pieces, and to Representative Casper's point, there is like a potential compromise alternative here, that if we are uncomfortable in voting for the entire operations budget, we could choose to move numbers by committee when reporting out those committee, and vote on each committee number. So we're maybe voting on seven numbers, not 37 numbers, or whatever it is. So that is a option on the table, is that right?
Yes.
Yep. And then, and the default will be whether or not that moves. And so what Representative Obray has put forward is she's just, she is saying, I want to confirm that we could go line, we want, will go line by line in this moment, but there hasn't been a motion against it. And even if this fails, we would still have to move that on May 1st.
We would still have to move that specific number if someone decides to make the motion to approve the town operations budget that was approved by the town council. Correct.
Okay. And that would be after everybody's committee meetings have happened, and so you would have a sense as a committee member of how you feel and your comfort with the research that you've done so far, as well as watching town meeting. Okay, thank you.
My pleasure. Representative Barrell?
Yes, I'm in agreement of the one-line item vote, but the problem I have with that would be that, you said, two years ago, we didn't cut anything out of the budget. It doesn't mean they tried. We spent 14 hours because people were arguing cuts in the budget. By voting that one line item, I think it's going to take away the voice of anybody who might want to cut a line out of that budget. That's the only thing I'd see. It's going to take away the voice of the people who want to cut.
I can understand your perspective on that, Representative Barrell. And I would say, and kind of to what Representative Norman just said, if we, as a body, decided to approve the town operations budget as presented, anybody in this body can make amendments to that, and they could speak to the item that they hold as something that they want to keep or reduce. Again, I just want to be clear, like, this is a proposed budget. There are no cuts. Right now, we're under an operations of fiscal year '24, '25, and we made those decisions to either increase a specific line item, keep it the same, or reduce a line item. We're not making any cuts per se, we're making reductions to the proposed budget. So it's something that I learned a long time ago from a predecessor of mine, that, again, we have that option. And again, all I am doing is articulating what I think might be the most efficient process for us. And when we did discuss that one specific line item to approve the budget democratically, it failed. So I just wanted to be abundantly clear, because this body wanted to go in onto it line by line. But it is my hope and desire to have this motion that's on the floor right now not pass, so that we have the option on May 1st to make the choice of whether we want to do town operations as a whole. Some people may decide that they want to do town operations, Board of Ed, and CIP as a whole. Don't think it's likely that it would pass, but again, we have that option as a group. Representative Obray, there are no other two-time speakers, so I'm going to, first-time speaker, so I'm going to open the floor for you again.
Thank you. I have great respect for you as the moderator, but I feel that each time somebody has spoken, you have spoken in opposition to it, not explanation necessarily. And I think you're overstepping what you're allowed to do as a moderator. I know some moderators, when they have an opinion, step away from the podium and then speak as, and ever not as the moderator. However, above that, I still feel that our job is to review and recommend whatever we think is appropriate. I have great respect for the committees that do their meetings, and especially like with the Shaun's meetings, which are numerous, it's always very well done, and the minutes are there, but it's still something, those meetings, I don't think most people are aware of them and don't watch them. And also, I don't think a lot of people will take the time to watch them now, because I think that most people are going to feel that this budget is just going to go the way that it is. And I find it very disappointing. I think our job is more important than that. And if we put in 16 hours or 20 hours, what is that for the next few years that we have ahead? It's going to be extremely difficult. And if we don't know how to make some cuts now, then how are we going to be prepared for anything? I'm sorry, I know I'm beating a dead horse, and I apologize for taking the time in the meeting, but I just can't stress enough the importance of the job that we're supposed to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other members that, excuse me?
Fox has joined us.
Oh, Fox is here. All right. Representative Fox, we have 33 members present now? Nobody, we didn't lose anybody, right?
No.
All right, so we have 33 members present. Representative Gardner A., you have the floor.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, one of the options is really, why don't we just wait and see? Let's have all the committees meet, everybody watch the committee meetings, and then, again, on May 1st, we decide. I don't think it's worth deciding now. I just do like, having the option, I actually am, I'm not sure which way I feel yet, because I'd like to go through my committee and go through the whole process. So I say, let's wait and see, let's not decide this now.
Thank you.
I agree.
Is there any other?
I'd be happy to withdraw my motion, if my second were withdrawn. I think that's an excellent suggestion. I'd be happy to go along with that.
All right, so we have withdrawn the motion. Is there a withdrawal of the second?
I'll withdraw the second.
All right, so none of this ever existed. All right, so we're going to go ahead and continue on with budget discussions. If there's any questions, comments. There's no more motion on the floor, just to be clear for our new members. Yes, Representative Fritchie, if you could just use the microphone, please. If you could just use the microphone, please, so that the public can hear you.
I just want to make sure I'm in line in the same way you are. Basically, saying that you're talking about the budget. Now, is this John Burton's budget that you're talking about, that we've been talking about just now?
That is correct.
Okay, so if we approve this now, we, there's, if we acknowledge it or whatever, but is this a final on the, on the budget?
There's, right now, we're not approving anything. We're having a budget discussion. There was, there was a motion on the floor that has been struck. What I have articulated to this body and the community is that the town council has approved town operations budget at their specific amount for town operations, outside agencies, and the two subdivisions, Groton Long Point and the city of Groton, which is those, those items that have been approved in one vote by the town council by majority vote. There is still, the town council still has to deliberate on the Board of Education budget and all capital improvement projects.
Okay, those four items, does that include Groton City?
I just, yes.
And Long Point?
Yes.
What's the other two?
Outside agencies. So again, Eastern Connecticut Symphony and other items that the, and again, that is based on what the town manager has recommended for their funding source for this specific year.
All right, so then?
Just to be clear that I believe that vote at the town council went seven to one to one.
Okay. I understand that we almost always vote yes in support, but we learn and like to know what is going on, and if there's something to discuss, then maybe we should be discussing it, and there's lots. But I want to ask, and I asked in the Democratic thing, if I'm talking about what the budget was, John Burton's budget that he prepared, are we talking about the tax base, or are we talking about the budget for the schools? Because they can be two different numbers.
Two separate.
It's just town operations budget, not the schools. Again, all we're doing here is we're voting on and approving, as an RTM body, the expenditures of the town. Leveying revenue sources, levying tax base and things like that is not our purview. It is always the town council that sets the mill rate and those items.
But this is the budget that, okay, has to be approved by, what is it, May 1st or something?
No, the town council has to finish their deliberations by April 28th.
Twenty, two days earlier.
From that point until the end of May 28th.
To suggest or make any changes that are to this budget, or is this the last chance we get to ask the town council to consider things, or do we have to go to the town council to talk about it? I mean, are they done? Are they basically saying this is what we're going to submit?
For town operations, they approved what the town manager had as recommendations. Now, again, let me just give you a brief history. In the past, the town, the town manager set up a budget, and then it goes to the town council. The town council decides whether they want to increase, keep it the same, or reduce the budget for that upcoming fiscal year. Then, after they've approved it democratically, then we would end up getting it through our committees. The committee would then decide whether they wanted to keep the town council's recommendation, or restore if it was a reduction, or reduce based on what the town council's recommendation was. It would then go to us as a group, and that group would decide, if it was a increase from the budget, we'd approve it. If it was the same number, we'd approve it or reject it. Or if it was, if there was a reduction and we wanted to restore funding, we would need 2/3 majority vote in order to restore that funding from what the town council has decided.
Okay. But what myself and two associates wanted to know is what the, what the mill rate is based on what has been approved?
We don't know yet.
We don't know yet.
Okay.
We will not, they do not set the mill rate.
The other sides of the operations and everything else.
We have to, our, our goal and our job here as RTM representatives is to approve the expenditures.
Okay.
The town council and the town manager set the mill rate.
Okay, they set the mill rate. Now, you know, the public doesn't have any say in that mill rate or discussion about it?
Anyone has the right to go to the first Tuesday of the month and talk to the town council, the first, the second Wednesday for RTM, and on May 1st, when we have our RTM budget to discuss that.
So really, I'm asking questions here of you that you, you really, I need to find out from the town council. And I can go back and review the last statement and so forth, and I will do that and try, the last statement, the last YouTube from, from last Tuesday. Okay, and I will, and I will do it that way. I'm wanting, I'm thinking that, that as we approve things, we need to know what the overall cost is going to be to the town and to the, you know, the property taxes, the people paying the taxes, and the people that are, you know, employing people, and everything else. It's all dependent on that knowledge. And I don't, I, obviously, it's not something we know right now.
Correct. And Representative Fritchie, in the budget book, there isn't, again, a budget is a forecast.
Yes.
And I have, let me, I don't want to step out of my bounds as a moderator, but the way that the budget is presented to us in that budget book that we all received, or you can get it online for the members of the community that are at home, please take a look at it, there are projections. There's projections on how much is going to be expended. There's projections on how much, where, and where the revenue sources come from, and what their anticipated mill rate would be.
Yeah. And that, and that is a process that actually really works for all the towns. And I mean, it's, you know, my kid went up in education over in Stonington, and it's totally different. They have finance committee, made all the decisions, but it worked, you know, more or less, in the long run. At first, we were fighting having referendums on every budget.
And again, that's, that's based on their charter and their discussions. Our charter's different.
Yeah, it's totally different. So listen, I'm not trying to make this long, but when we ask for review and approval, shouldn't we say that, okay, this is what the town has paid, and this is how much that this is going to cost, and, and this is what the mill rate is going to be? And yet, we're waiting almost till after it's approved, and then we establish a mill rate. What's going on there?
It's the Groton Town Charter.
Was that?
It's the Groton Town Charter.
Okay, so, so where do you get the information then? We should know it now.
We have a budget book.
What?
We have a budget book.
I know, but does that have, does that have the mill rate?
And as I, and as I said, Representative Fritchie, time and time again, if you have questions regarding the budget and the process, and the mill rates, and other things like that, the town manager, John Burton, is very accessible. You can send him an email, and he would respond to any question that you ask. I cannot tell you how many times that I've reached out to him about items like this and others, and he is very prompt in getting your answers met.
Okay. All right, I'm going to leave it at that, because I guess I was at, I mean, this is not the right forum for it.
Oh, we're, we're in, we're in our meeting right now, and again, I just want to be clear. This line item for budget discussion is on every agenda item. Every single meeting, we have this opportunity to discuss this. And again, I've been up here a pretty long time. We've never had this long of a discussion on this, and we could have had these discussions time and time again, and it went radio silent. And again, I don't mean to be disrespectful or try to challenge the body or anything like that, but these are the questions that should have been asked a long time ago, not when the budget was put out in March. So I'm just going to be completely open and honest on that, if, if.
How, you're saying that they had a mill rate out there in March?
No, if you had questions on the mill rate, you should have asked those questions.
Point of order, point of order, point of order, point of clarification. First of all, clarification, point of order. First of all, clarification, point of order. We are going a little bit astray, askew, of the matter on hand.
What is, wait, before, before we go on, Representative Perella, again, there's a point of order made. What is your specific point of order?
The point of order is that you're discussing something when the, the motion was withdrawn, so the.
Well, well, hold on. So the, the motion has been withdrawn, so if that's your point of order, that's not well taken.
Well, that's an opinion.
We are, but again, that's.
That's your opinion as a moderator, however, you are continuing the discussion with the representative.
Correct.
So I'm asking you as a point of order to not do that.
Your point of.
This should be stopping.
It's different.
The point, again, first of all.
Because it's taking time.
That is. You're right. But the point of order is not well taken, and if you do not like the way that it, I, I've judged on it, you can appeal the ruling of the chair. Item K, budget discussions. We're having budget discussion. Representative Fritchie has asked questions and wanted to know answers to those budget questions.
They've been answered.
So we are having those discussions right now, so.
For clarification reasons, you answered the questions. If that's not registering with the understanding of the questions being answered, then, to me, if you want to have more discussion, it's proving the point that we probably should go line by line. Not that we necessarily want to, but we might have a disagreement for somebody might not want this amount of personnel in a particular part of that budget, might want to cut the budget, or another person may say, no, I want it over here. So it kind of like, that discussion you just had kind of proves to me that you need to do a line item discussion at the next meeting, which was brought up by Representative Gardner.
To be fair, Representative Perella, he was asking about a mill rate.
Right, and that's because he needs to have justification of what he thinks it might be due to the fact that we don't know the spend.
Point of order.
What, again, Representative Good, you called a point of order. What is your point of order and what it's related to?
He made a point of order. He ruled on the point of order. If he wants to challenge it, he should challenge it. Otherwise.
Right, we have to stop.
I don't believe he has a point.
Correct, I will, that point is well taken. Is there any other discussion on the budget? Representative Massett, did you have your hand up? Representative Casper?
It's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. To, to help maybe clarify the issue, we got a note of mill right now, is I believe that the council, either last year or the year before, made a decision to spend more of the fund balance, and that brought down the port, part, the taxpayer portion, and lowered the mill rate. If they didn't make that decision, it would have been a higher mill rate, because that's what's left.
Yes, that's.
So, so there's a variability in there that we don't control.
Yeah.
There could be a range, you could figure out a range, basically figure out the percentage that the taxpayers pay in, in the, of the expenses, divide that by the, the grand list, and you get the mill rate. Or divide that into the mill, grand list, and you get the mill rate, or whatever.
So just, just to, he just basically, those were the questions that I had to answer, was asked to get answers to. And I, I realize now that this is not something that has been done yet, so we don't really know. And, and one of them was, what he just said, the fund balance, whether we're going to use more of it or not. And another one was, you know, but the, the feeling, and this comes from a Democratic side, not, not a conservative side, Republican side, is that we have possibilities of contingencies and other things going on right now that could affect us. And I sort, I, I was asked to get the answers to these questions, but that was not the right place to go, was to bring it here, was to bring it really to the town council and ask them. So I apologize to everybody for doing this, but I was persistently of a, of an opinion to try and get some answers. Thank you.
My pleasure. Representative Watson, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. It, it, from, sitting back and listening, it, it sounds like some of the, some people don't have a real good picture of what the whole budget process is. And maybe an overview of that might be in order, just to make sure that everybody knows what that is. And I could briefly explain what, what I think it is, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the budget that we have is the town manager and the board of education's proposed budget. It's not their budget. It's a proposed budget. They start working on the budget back in October of last year. Department heads are asked to give what they think they need for, to run parking wrecks, for instance, or, or the police department or anything else. The town manager gets all those numbers from those departments and, and talks back and forth with whatever department head it is, and either accepts that or doesn't accept that, and they talk about it. And whatever number the town manager comes up with after talking to the department heads, that's the number that goes into his proposed budget in March. Now, the board of education does some, since they're aware of it. They have department heads and directors of different departments and things, and that, those proposals go to the superintendent of schools. It goes back and forth with the finance director, and, and then the superintendent of the schools proposes a budget that she, she has, but she proposes that to the board of ed. The board of ed talks about it, and they adjust it one way or the other. And then, then that final budget becomes part of our budget with the town of operations. So now, there's two budgets that are, that are proposed by the, one, the board of ed, and one by the town manager, that becomes our budget to work with. And then it goes to the town council, and the town council does whatever they choose to do to deliberate on budgets. They can go line by line if they want. They can do what they did on the town operations side and just accept it the way it is. In other words, saying, okay, town manager, you did a good job, and we're going to pass that part on to the RTM. And the board of ed, I mean, the council has not done CIPs or outside, I don't know if they've done outside agencies or not, and the board of ed budget, and then that comes to us. Now, when it comes to us, we have committees. And every single one of those committees, myself included, I'm on Parks and Rec, will get presentations from those department heads, and we will have the number that the town council passed on to us. We can, if the town council, in this case, did a pass-through, we could talk about it. And our committee makes a recommendation to the RTM. And every committee does that. Education does that, as a matter of fact. And then May 1st comes. We have, and I, I, I agree with whoever said earlier, that's the time for us to talk about voting one vote on the operations side or, or whatever we want to do. We can have this lengthy discussion at the beginning of May, and I'm sure we're gone over. And then we talk about the budget. We can, I'm going to pick on recreation, because that's what I do. We'll, we'll get, I will get up, read the minutes of my committee, and say what our committee suggests for recommend, for, for the recreation budget. It depends on what comes out of our committee. And then we have a month of talking about line items, or not talking about line items, going over the budget. We come up with a number that's the same as the town councils or less, basically. And then when we're done, we pass that back to the town council, but what we think the budget should be. And they, they talk about where the revenue is going to come from to pay for this budget. And now that, last year, they took money out of the fund balance, which is nice, but we don't know what the town council's going to do. Let's say we get to the end of this whole thing as a three-mill tax rate, based on what we pass. The town council could say, oh, we're going to take $5 million fund balance. It's not going to be three mills, it's going to be two mills. I don't know what the numbers are going to be. Or they could just make it whatever we, that, that they want. It's up to the council to make the mill rate adjusted at the very end of this whole process. I hope I wasn't too long, and I think I was pretty, pretty correct. Is that clear to some of the people that seem to not really understand what's going on, as far as mill rate goes and the town manager's budget? I'm done.
Thank you, Representative Watson. And just for clarification purposes, Representative Watson was a town counselor for two decades plus?
Twenty-seven years.
Yes, so he's, he's very knowledgeable about the process and going forward. So again, this discussion that we had is, again, quite beneficial, helpful in our deliberations, and I've learned some things over this 40 minutes of budget discussion. One of the things that I just did is I sent to the town clerk three things, all right? I sent them the public hearing from the town council, so if you haven't watched it, please watch it, because all of the information that you're asking for, the town manager has already spoken to once already, and that was, I believe, on, and I'm, I'm sorry if I'm, I'm trying to, I'm not playing on my phone, because I don't have Food for Friends or whatever that thing is called, March 26, 2025. So go on to Groton Municipal Television, look at Groton Town Council Propose FYE 2026 Budget, March 26, 2025. It's a 50-minute presentation. Next one is March 27, 2025. It's the town council's first town council budget discussion. It is a 12-minute meeting, and it talks about what they've decided democratically to figure out. I have also sent you a forwarded message from town manager Burt, based on the town manager's request, or, excuse me, town manager was requested by the town council to talk about those numbers on whether they should use fund balance and, and reallocate funds to see what the proposed mill rate would be if the budget that is proposed right now stands as is. So I just sent that to you, so if you could please forward, if you need to, just forward it all at once for all the bodies so that they are fully aware of what's going on out there, okay? Is there any other discussion on the budget? Yes, Representative Swindell, welcome back. If you can just handle the microphone, please, and, you know, again, please stand if you're able.
This is not the budget. I just wanted to thank the, my friends of the RTM for welcoming me back. The RTM has always been able to discuss the budget and other issues without the kind of cracker that we see going on elsewhere in the political system, and I, I look forward to being re-engaged with that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Swindell. All right, I don't see any other hands for budget discussion. All right, we're going to go on to item L, other business. Is there any other, other business? All right, so M1, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, moved by Adams, seconded by Good. This is non-debatable. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right, we will see you all May 1st. Remember, folks, there has been assignments made for snacking and all those other things. Our first budget items that are going to be discussed is voter registration, town clerk, finance, revale fund, Mumford Cove, Groton Sewer, debt service contingency, and education. See you on May Day.